If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Glasgow, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you roll call vote, please?
Sakura, Terrencey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne, Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here. Five present, two absent. We do have a quorum. Tonight, we do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:40. I'm going to open up the floor for comments from the public until 7:40. Everyone, anyone that would like to address counsel can go to the podium. This would be for items that are on the agenda tonight. There will be another period towards the end of the meeting, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address counsel tonight? No? No? All right, then we will move to consent business. I do need to pull the agenda, excuse me, from consent due to an amendment we need to make. We have a Compensation Commission meeting on Friday, and we had a person asked to be removed from the Compensation Commission, so we need to replace them. Ms. Stacey Bilby, a longtime Utica resident, has volunteered to be nominated. It is a five-year term. Ms. Bilby has been an active member in the Utica community. She's a crossing guard. She was also on the Resident Water Committee. She helps me every year do the Halloween and Christmas decoration contests. And I think secretly she is the Rusty the Pig decorator, but I have not been able to exactly confirm that yet. So I will be pulling that out of consent. So I would be looking for a motion to approve consent business, with the exception of approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sakura, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We have no unfinished business, no correspondence, and we can't move forward to temporary tent until after the public hearing. So at this time, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Stacey Bilby to the Compensation Commission. Her term would expire in 2029.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Robinson, support by O'Donnell.
That was Ryan.
Oh, Ryan, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sakura, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. I'm going to go ahead and move forward with my comments tonight. This week, we were honored with a visit from Governor Whitmer and State Representative Nate Shannon. This happened at the library. They were here to discuss some tax initiatives that they have been working on. Utica, I talked to the library director, Ms. Francis, and Utica shone brightly that day. Our library staff did a fantastic job. DPW also did a great job kind of cleaning up. As it's so early in spring, you know, that winter nastiness is still around, but the DPW kind of stepped up and made everything look as good as it can at this time of year. So I really like to thank everybody involved. It was a successful event. The media attention was on Utica for a day, and that's always a good thing. Tomorrow is the grand opening of Mr. McGal's, right next door, across the parking lot. I believe they open at noon tomorrow. It's been a long road for them. They pretty much rehabbed that whole building. It is gorgeous inside. Anything you look at or see when you walk in there is pretty much a new surface. I was able to get a sneak peek over the weekend, and it's just really beautiful. So we're excited for that addition to our downtown. As I mentioned, there's a Compensation Commission meeting on Friday, April 12th, at 6:00 p.m. That'll be taking place right here in council chambers. During that meeting, they will determine all the compensation for the elected officials in the city. So that is open to the public. Anyone's welcome to attend. On Saturday, we have the swing dedication for the Zeremba family. That is Saturday, April 13th, at 11:30 a.m. at Grant Park. All are welcome to that. It'd be great to see some participation from council. We approved dedicating that swing to the Zeremba family late last year. And finally, something near and dear to my heart is the Utica Puppy Parade. That's on April 27th at 2:00 p.m. We're busy making preparations for that. It's going to be a great event. It always is. The parade will start on Saturday, April 27th, at 2:00 p.m. at Grant Park. Van Dyke will be closed for a short time. We thank our fire and police for helping the parade get across Van Dyke safely. It ends up at Pioneer Park, where there's guest speakers, vendors, pet rescue groups. Chief will be making kind of his official appearance, our 25-foot blow-up dog with Utica logo on its chest. He's kind of made some sneak appearances here and there, but that'll be his first official appearance. We also have a food truck and a couple bounce houses for the kids, so that will be a great event as well. At this time, as we have done in years past, we proclaim April to be Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month. This was kind of following the lead of the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals organization. They have a national campaign where they also proclaim April to be Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month. And that's why our puppy parade kind of coincides with that. We picked the last Saturday of April so that we hopefully get the best possible Michigan weather we can for this event. As a response to animal abuse and cruelty incidents of the past, we adopt this resolution every year. We previously proclaimed it in April 2021, 2022, and 2023. And I will go ahead and read the resolution into the record. "2024 Resolution Declaring April 2024 to be Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month. Whereas the City of Utica recognizes the importance of the health, safety, and well-being of animals; and whereas Michigan compiled law provides that certain acts of neglect and/or abuse of an animal is a crime and sets forth fines and potential imprisonment for same; and whereas the City of Utica supports appropriate penalties against those found guilty of the neglect and/or abuse of an animal; and whereas awareness of the connection between animal abuse and human violence can protect those who are vulnerable; and whereas the month of April is recognized nationally as the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Utica declares the month of April 2024 to be Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month and urge working together to prevent, recognize, and report signs of animal abuse to protect all animals from abuse and neglect." I would be looking for a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a very slow roll call vote, so we can get to our public hearing.
Sakura. Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
I, for one, think this is a fantastic idea.
Yes.
So I'm going to go ahead and vote yes. Affirmative, aye.
Sure.
Very good.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. And as it is, this digital clock is pretty good. There's no leverage here, you know? It's going to tell you exactly what the number is.
She got all the seconds on it.
I just want to take a moment to say that I'm really a fan of Brad's tie this evening. It's a nice choice.
You know what? Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Usually I go with a shirt that doesn't, sort of like contrasting colors. Today I decided to match, so, you know.
Good stuff. Top shelf.
Do you like my shoes?
I'm just kidding.
It's because he's middle-aged now. It's because you're middle-aged now.
It's because I'm middle-aged. As of a week ago today, I'm officially middle-aged.
I would be looking for a motion to enter public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Robinson. Support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We are in public hearing. Is the petitioner here tonight?
Yes, sir.
This is for fireworks sales temporary tent 45101 Shaner Road. If you could give us your name and address, please, sir.
Michael Canagree. 47816 Adario Drive, Shelby Township. I'm here for the fireworks that we went in front of some of these people last week. I just want to put a tent up. We've had a place over, you've got to excuse me a little bit. I just got 20, 22% of my heart working. I'm waiting for a heart transplant, so I'm kind of slow. A couple of years ago, we were at Friday's, where now is the real place on the corner there. And we've been in the business for 10 or 15, 12, 10 or 12 years. And we've never had any problems in any of our locations. We have a city, a state license already. We have all the permits and everything that it entitles. And we're asking if you still desire that. We'd like to set up at this location. And if there's anything that needs to be done that hasn't been done, we'll be more than happy to do it. And the state fighter marshal comes out along with the city fighter marshal. What else can I say? I mean, you guys know what it's about, you know what I mean?
Mayor and council, can I help Mr.? His dates are June 14th to July 5th. The tent will be located in the closed KFC parking lot. On Shaner, yes. The tent size is 40 by 60. They do have all of the plans, the insurance, the Lara required items, and the lease agreement with the property owner. Planning Commission did recommend approval on April 3rd, and in your packet was Amanda's letter for that, just to verify. She asked for verification of the size of the tent, and it is 40 by 60. Planning Commission did ask about the size of the, and the placement of the proposed banners, the signage that Family Fun Fireworks is suggesting. That was extra on your table this evening. It looked a lot like this. I also attached to it, did have all of the temporary sign guidelines. Mr. Hicks reviewed the plans. They, what's allowed for temporary signs is 12 square feet, one 12-square-foot sign. They are going to be asking for three, four-by-16 signs, which Jerry did the math for me, and 72 square feet for each one, if that is, if that is the proper size. If he can confirm that it's four by 16, four feet by 16 for the banners.
Right.
That's a lot over. It would be allowed with a permit, with council approval. He does have in red on the map where he would like those signs. I would just remind them that they do need to be five feet inside the property line and that they have to be with poles in the ground. They can't be attached to, like, street poles or signs or anything like that, so.
Steel stakes.
Steel stakes would be fine, yes. That is true. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, I did attend that planning meeting, and planning approved it, or recommended approval. And as you see in the packet, we have a letter from our city planner, Amanda, and she recommended approval as well. Are you still requesting the three signs? That would put you way over the...
It's just temporary for a couple of weeks, and I guess I would have to pay more money for the signs. No problem with that. It's just a couple-week thing.
It's like two and a half weeks, something like that? And so from looking at the drawing, these signs are not going to be a long-haul road at all.
Oh, no, they're on the grass area. I know it doesn't show up very well there, but, okay.
We have this. If that's what he's got there.
Two in the front off the right-of-way, right on the property, on the grass right there and there, and then one in the back. But all of it's on the property, on the grass, and I think it's about seven or eight feet back from the right of the property line itself.
And so when it says five feet from any property line, all that property is owned by the shopping center, right? Is the property line, the hall road property line?
No, the hall, it is outlined on the, on the plot map. And so the only one that I would be worried about is the one at the bottom here. I don't know if he can be five feet. I don't know how big that, that grassy area is. But none of them would be in the site, like, they wouldn't be, you know, impeding traffic. Thank you, obstructing traffic or anything like that. But I don't know if this one can be five feet inside the property line, the one at the bottom.
Just because there's that physical, enough physical space?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on that one. The other ones, I'm not worried about at all. I don't think that they would be. But the one at the bottom of the map is the one that I don't, I'm not sure of.
Counsel, have any questions?
I have no questions, but I do have a concern. And this is my concern, that you are asking for, like, four times or three times, what our ordinance states. And once we start making exceptions like this, because these are big signs, four feet by 16, it's huge, then the next person's going to come and say, but you did it for him. And that's one of my concerns is to approving this because of the size. And it goes way above, and I understand that it's three weeks. I do understand that. But the ordinance does state for temporary signs. And this is a temporary sign.
Can I answer that question?
Yes.
Because I don't want any kind of problems. But there's another man in the next parking lot that's been there, Virgil, for 10 years. And in the next parking lot, next to Dunkin' Donuts, he'll be coming in front of you soon. And he's been using, we use the same exact signs from the same company for the last 15 years. And he has three to four of them out there himself. And I'm not to kind of, you know, I'm just saying.
Thank you.
We both have the same thing. They're not obstructing traffic. And if it costs, I don't care what it costs. We need to have a little bit of advertisement, because it's only a couple-week holiday. And I got two kids in the University of South Florida, one at Michigan State. And this is theirs. It's not for me. In fact, I don't plan on having a very long life, to tell you the truth. So if it's okay, okay. If it's not, we'll make it smaller. Whatever you desire, we'll make it happen.
Thank you. Can I?
Did you have something to add?
I did. I'm so sorry. The other applicant that he's speaking of does have large signs. They are on his tent. They are around, like, the bottom and around, like, on the tent. They're not freestanding out like what this applicant is proposing. So that is the difference.
So they're mounted?
They're mounted to his tent. Mr. Hicks can attest to that from years past, but they're...
The ordinance also says that, asking if they're, if he's asking for signs bigger than what our signed ordinance allows for, then you guys have the right to either buy permit. He has to have a permit, and you have to approve it through council, so.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
Do any of the, either of the chiefs have any concerns?
No, it's pretty much covered by the state now, so.
No concerns with, if they were to be approved to have the signs as presented in the literature here? No issues with that?
No issues.
Mary, if I may also, the ordinance does state cannot be higher than five foot in commercials.
Right.
So it can only be a five-foot high. May help with it, so it doesn't obstruct traffic and so forth.
So if they're four foot by 16, that means they can only be...
Well, the sign itself is going to be four foot, according to what he adds, four foot by 16 feet. But from the ground up, you can't go higher than five foot. You know what I'm saying?
But it's a four-foot sign, so he can't have more than a, he has to have less than a foot of post underneath the sign, right?
Yeah.
Any further questions? All right, I'd be looking for a motion to leave public hearing and return to council meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We are back in our regular meeting.
Thank you very much.
Well, we're getting, we're conveniently, this is the very next item we're going to discuss now. So you can sit down, though. Absolutely.
Good.
So as we just heard, the gentleman is looking for a motion to approve Family Fun Fireworks LLC fireworks sales and temporary tent from June 14th to July 5th at 45101 Shaner Road. If we could get a motion on the floor, and then we could deliberate if necessary.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ryan.
I'll support.
Support by Robinson. Any discussion from council? If we were to minimize the signage, you know, this is your business, not mine, obviously. I don't see a huge benefit to having both of those signs on the east side of the property. I mean, it seems like there is one facing north to south, and the other one's facing east to west.
Right.
It's hard to tell by the drawing. Is that what the configuration is?
Would you like just one in the front, one in the back? That would be fine with me, instead of having two in the front, because both of them are on the grass area in the front.
Well, the one is the one that I think this...
That one was, there's not only about four foot of grass area there, but we were going to put stakes right on, into the asphalt. We have permission to do that and keep it five feet back, or six feet back.
The southern one?
Yes, yes.
I mean, if I might be the only one that has concerns about going this far over?
Oh, I have a concern. But it was approved for a 12-by-three-foot banner. So that would be three feet, and plus that would be four foot with your foot of pole. And what happened with that?
We won't have that one. Let's just stick with this one, because it's a nicer sign.
Excuse me, counsel, I'm so sorry. So it did say that on his tent thing. He never applied. He did not apply for his signage at all. They talked about it at planning, and today, his son sent me the signage here. So originally, what they were going to ask for, but they never applied for signage yet. So it does say that that is just the tent permit so far. Oh, you, did I give you to assign one as well? But, sorry, his original plan was for smaller banners, but they never applied for those.
It says 4 by 3.
Yes.
I think Councilwoman Terrencey makes a good point. You know, once we set precedent, then the next petitioner's going to say, well, you've approved this in the past. Mr. Hicks, do you have an opinion on this? Is your our code enforcement officer?
I, he could always make a smaller sign, you know, instead of the 4 by 16. I mean, that is rather excessive, I think. It could be, it could be smaller. They're still going to see the sign from...
I could deal with that. It's fine with me.
Angles. I mean, the, what the code is, what did I say it was? How many square feet?
12 square feet total?
Right, 12, so that's, you know, 12 square feet is not much.
Right, it's one-six by two.
Yeah, you know, so, I mean, if they were to make the sign smaller, you know, say even 10 foot by two foot is fine. All they say is fireworks, right?
Right.
You know, so something to that effect, something smaller than the 4 by 16, you know.
Would he be allowed to attach those signs to his tent like the other petitioner does?
Yeah, he could.
I have...
And on three sides of his tent?
We do, the tables we make.
I was trying to help you out.
Let's say this is a table, table like this. We have ours different than anybody else. We are 100% fireproof as far as tops on everything. Not like most places, just put everything in it. We put a lot, well, I'm not sure which gentleman's been there before or not, but all the way around, we have them signs.
Could you put, can that sign be made smaller and can it be attached to your tent?
I have signs going around the tent on the inside, which doesn't require...
You want to advertise on the outside.
Right, right.
That sign be smaller and put on the outside of the...
I can put a 2 by 10. That's the lowest, the smallest they make them, the company, so that would be fine. I have no problem.
So what are we suggesting, one, two by 10? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, if he wants...
Three.
He wants three, so that's up to you guys, okay? But I would say restrict the size to 2 by 10? And he's going to mount them on the walls of his tent on the outside, right?
No, I think he's saying he wants them on poles.
Oh, you think so? Put them on the outside?
I don't know whether we're talking about the same thing. Is he mounting them on the outside, or is he still posting them on the outside?
No, he's saying they're going to be staked.
Wants them in the position.
Okay.
Like he has now, only the smaller. Freestanding.
Yes, exactly.
Mary, you're confused.
I'm not confused. I'm just trying to make sure we're doing the right thing. Personally, I think three is overkill. I think we should stick with two.
That's fine.
And I think I could support having two at the 4 by 16. The rationale, you know, if we have to explain this to a petitioner in the future, it's only for two and a half weeks. It's for temporary sale. But that's my opinion, and I don't know if council agrees with that or not.
I'm good with it.
I would be more comfortable if it was smaller. I mean, I would even be more comfortable with what is in this approval from Amanda that said three by 10. Or, I'm sorry, three 12 by three banners. I would be more comfortable. I think that four feet high is excessive.
That's fine.
You know, and I, three feet is okay. 12 is good. Three is okay, but four is just kind of over.
Okay, that's fine.
So what are you suggesting, councilman? Two signs?
Three by 12.
Two signs, three by 12. I think we need a friendly amendment then, because we already had a motion.
I'll make that friendly amendment.
And...
Who seconded it?
Robinson.
I'll support it.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sue, can you read the amendment back so that we're all clear and all on the same page?
Motion to approve the Family Fun Fireworks LLC fireworks sales and temporary tents June 14th to July 5th at 45101 Shaner Road with two three-foot by 12-foot temporary banners.
Yes, thank you.
Sakura, Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You, too. Next on the agenda, I finished my reports. Does anyone from council have anything to report? Nothing from planning or assessing tonight. Mr. Hicks, anything from building?
No, just for the public out there, like you said earlier, the weather is hopefully starting to, and will stay nice. So just mind your lawns, your debris, stuff that you're going to be throwing out and so forth, because I am in the neighborhoods looking for that kind of stuff. Pardon me? Yeah, no burning, thank you, from the fire chief. Are they allowed permits if they burn?
No.
Okay, so no permits, so just keep the properties up? That's it?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Francis, library report. Can you have a mic?
Just wanted to say and reiterate what you said about the governor and the library. And thank Bill, even though he's not here, but I already told him. His guys are out mowing the lawn and cleaning up the outside, making everything look presentable for the governor. It's, um, it's kind of a big deal for a little library, so we were really excited just to have that kind of, um, you know, event going on there. And they liked it so much, they might be back. I might encourage them because she's got a book coming out, so we'll see. But, um, but no, I want to say thank you. You guys did a great job helping us and it was really fun. It was a great event, so.
It was.
Yeah.
And you guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you, yeah.
Chief Fosack, report from fire.
Yes, mayor and council, um, before you have a agenda item summary, I would like to take the money that was, uh, given to us by the scrap company for the scrapping of our aerial truck that, um, we had motor problems with and wasn't worth a whole lot being sold on the open market. We got more for scrap. So I'd like to take that five thousand, six hundred and four dollars and twenty-five cents and deposit it into the fixed assets account and request to transfer that money in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and four dollars and twenty-five cents to purchase an extendo gun, not to exceed twenty-one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and a seventeen hundred and seven, seventeen, one thousand, seven hundred and seven point forty to cover our equipment purchases that were currently not budgeted for. And the two accounts that this would affect is, uh, sale of fixed assets, one oh one, three, three, six, 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 five, zero, zero, zero. Deposited into equipment purchases, one oh one, three, three, six, nine, eight, one, zero, zero, zero. And I need motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Well, um, I think.
I think it's, it's broke up into three motions, isn't it?
It is broken up.
It is, and I think we had an account, a GL number wrong. Before we proceed, let, let me address this thing real quick. One, for, when we get down to motion three for the purchase of the item, we didn't have any supporting documentation for this item. There's really no, uh, you know, normally when we're talking about a purchase of this scale, we need to have some proof, something like an estimate, something that shows what this.
I got that today from, I was working with Spencer.
We don't have it in our packet unfortunately. And I believe there's also some issues with the account numbers. I tried to review this, uh, with the treasurer and frankly, I couldn't get through it. So I don't think we have a problem with, uh, amending the budget to account for the sale of fixed assets. So that motion, I don't think we have a, a problem with, other than the incorrect. Actually, it's correct in the under suggested action, but it looks like it's incorrect in the summary. I believe the correct, uh, GL number is one oh one, three, three, six, six, nine, three, zero, zero, zero. Let me call the treasurer in here. Maybe he could give us a little clarification on this.
Excuse me, um, yes, uh, mayor, you are correct in the, um, under the revenue source GL, uh, that number was incorrect. It says six, six, five, should have been six, nine, three. Six, six, five is an interest, uh, account number. And then in the summary section, again, it should be, uh, replace six, six, five with six, nine, three for sale of fixed assets. The other GL account numbers are correct. I would say under the suggested action, the second motion, uh, should be a motion to use the funds from the sale of fixed assets. We don't transfer funds from the revenue account to the expenditure account. And, uh, then the, there should be a motion to amend the budget for nine, eight, one, the equipment purchase because the, currently there is no money in that budget. So in addition to budgeting, amending the budget for the sale of fixed assets revenue, we would need to amend the budget for the expenditure as well.
Yeah, so I think we're okay with the first item to do the motion there. But without having any supporting documentation for the purchase, I would not support, uh, moving forward with the purchase at this point.
I don't even know what an extendo gun is. I'm like.
I actually.
Okay.
When I went to purchase the truck, um, I explained all that back way, way back in August. Um, there's a picture of it that was sent. It goes on top of the truck, or the deluge guns goes on top of that. And the extended gun extends the piece of pipe, um, I don't, the mayor has a picture of it right there.
Yeah, we got this after, because I was asking the clerk questions about this.
That piece of pipe extends up out of the other piece of pipe and it brings it up out of the deck of the truck so we could use it to, for a master stream.
Okay, so it's a gun.
It's, it's a piece of pipe that the gun goes on top of.
Okay.
But I think the real issue is we don't know if this, who this vendor, what vendor this is coming from, other than what's written in the suggested action. We don't know.
I was waiting on to get the estimate back, if you want to pass that down. It's from Spencer Trucks. They're, they're the ones that have to install it. Because if we have it installed somewhere else, it doesn't get put into our computer system that's on the truck for safety factors of, like if we were to pull away from the fire scene with the gun raised up, it could get torn off with coming into the garage or hitting wires or trees, so.
This still doesn't really.
Their name's not on it, but that's what he sent me, so.
And, and I think the other thing we have to consider is we're literally having a budget session for fire a week from today, I believe, is.
Yeah.
Isn't it? Or was it next week?
Well, let's just get the motions going and we can deliberate with, uh, as we get to it. So Chief Fosack is looking for a motion to amend fiscal year twenty twenty-four general fund budget increasing by five thousand, six hundred and four dollars and twenty-five cents to the sale of fixed assets GL. Now let me make sure I get this right now. One oh one, three, three, six, six, nine, three, zero, zero, zero.
So moved, support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote.
Sakura Terrenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Excuse me, yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, that motion carries. The next motion, uh, chief's looking for is a motion to use funds from fixed assets account, one oh one, three, three, six, six, nine, three, zero, zero, zero. But even that's not correct, right? Because we would really truly need a budget amendment because equipment purchases has a zero balance right now. So the, the true motion should be to. Yeah.
To transfer and amend the budget.
To transfer and amend the budget. Boy, this is tricky.
This is my concern. Yes, it was talked about in August, which I have to be honest, there was so much going on with that truck. I don't remember this part. And this, in, in the past, I've been on council for twelve years. And in the past, every now and then, things would get thrown at us that we were supposed to make a decision with no supporting documents. And I, I personally don't feel like I'm able to make a decision without anything to go with this, except it was talked about in August. That's how I feel. You know, if, if we had something and, um, that, that's all I have to say, yeah.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion to postpone, uh, approval of the transfer of the funds and purchase of this item until we can get the correct GL information and information on the vendor, including, uh, verification that this is competitive pricing for our residents. You know, just getting, what we have really doesn't give us enough, uh, information to do our due diligence. So that's my motion.
Support.
Motion by Calendrino, support by Terrenzi. Any discussion from council?
So my question would be, um, wouldn't we just add this to this, the budget that we're talking about in two weeks? Or do we need it? How soon do we need something like this?
Well, I believe chief's saying it would be, the truck is supposed to, this is the brand new truck, right?
Correct.
Outfitted right now. So it's supposed to be delivered in June. I think what he's trying to do is get this installed before it gets to us so it gets recorded in the database or whatever, whatever it was.
Well, there's also certain features of what, of this where it needs to be installed at the manufacturing. It'd be like ordering a car without a radio in it. Like, I'm just going to install a radio later. Like, no, you're going to want the one that comes with the factory. But it's, I mean, there's certain things that do need to be purchased.
Well, truthfully, I mean, they should have been done earlier than it was. You know, I, I, my motion is that we need to table it. Um, you know, when did we first?
We're getting it in June, right? So we can vote on it in May and we'll still have it before you guys get it, right? Am I wrong about that?
It's not going to be installed at the manufacturer.
I don't know. Don't they have it before you? I, I'm confused.
I believe it's getting used in a show. Isn't this vehicle going to be used in a, it's actually going to be done before we get it, right? It's going to get a show or something.
Pretty much complete. I think Brian sent pictures to you. Um, we did get all that, uh, the lettering on it for nothing, five thousand dollars worth of lettering for, um, their use of the truck for the shows, so. But like, the, the whole thing is, is this came, I was going to buy it separately and install it after we got it, until I talked to the manufacturer and they said that that would void our safety systems on the truck. Right now, they're, the, you know, the, you know how everything is today. It's computerized, you know? So the safety feature with that being in the up position would trigger, do not move the truck, warning buzzers and everything else. That'd be incorporated with the computer system on the truck, which would probably have to go back to the factory after, if we got it installed after the fact, so. That's the reason.
More money?
No, manufacturer's over on the west side of the state.
Okay.
But why now and why not earlier? I understand that.
We didn't have the money for it.
We didn't have it in budget?
No.
We just need more information than we got.
Okay.
You know, literally what got in the packet that the public has seen is just this AIS form, which there's no way to prove that this is a competitive pricing. It doesn't really prove who the vendor is. Uh, the product name is mentioned, but not who we're purchasing from. It's, it's just not the way we got to do business, that's all. So that's my motion. I don't recall if there was support or not.
I supported it.
Uh, motion by Calendrino, support by Terrenzi. Is there any further discussion?
What was the motion?
That we postpone voting on the transfer of the funds and the purchase until we have correct GL information, for one. And more information that we can do our due diligence to prove that this is competitive pricing and who this vendor is and, you know, that, that we're being responsible the way we spend our taxpayers' money.
Yeah, our normal process. That's what our normal process is.
Yep. Any further discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote.
Sakura Terrenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion Ryan.
No.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, chief. Is there anything else to report tonight? Thank you, sir. Chief Glusney.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Including your packet is a agenda item summary and, and this is for radio tower base engineering. Back in August, I approached council regarding a, conducting a bore sample for a, a new tower location. Our, our current tower that, that is up, um, is, does not pass the state's standards and, and needs to come down. There's, there's a number of issues that, that we're having with that tower. So I've been on a long trek on, on trying to research and, and get this project going. Results of the bore sample, due to the soils and, and the composition that's in there, the company was recommending a thirty-five by thirty-five foot excavation and twelve feet deep, removing all that soil, replacing re-engineered soil, compacting it, removing it. In context with an excavation company, they came up with an alternative method that's, that's more cost prohibitive to excavate a, a smaller area, but using what's called like engineered helicopiers. So essentially, you're, you're able to get the same, um, soil bearing pressure out of a large excavation from a much smaller surface at a much more fiscally responsible price. Uh, in discussions with my tower manufacturer, they require that because this is an alternative to what was presented in the bore company, that they need the engineered bore company to come and, and prove that the tower will be able to support the weight in the soils and stuff. Uh, I have spoken with the excavation company. I've spoken with the tower manufacturer company and obviously the bore sample company. And they are all confident that, you know, if this happens, excavator can move forward, tower can move forward. And then hopefully by, by next council meeting, I'll have a full packet of full prices and, and stuff to bring to you for, for the, uh, construction of this tower. What I'm requesting in, in this agenda item summary is, is to conduct the engineering for the, the new proposed base using the helicopiers, and this is going to be done by G two consulting. Uh, funds for this project are coming out of our drug forfeiture account. So this is, this is funds that the officers have taken in through various, um, you know, law enforcement means, uh, prisoner or property, uh, reimbursement, stuff like that. So it's nothing that comes out of the taxpayer accounts and it's specific funds that need to go towards the enforcement of drug, alcohol enforcement like that. Obviously, having radio communications is something that we need to be able to communicate, to be able to combat the, the drugs out there. So I'll be requesting a budget amendment to engineering and that's GL two sixty-five, three oh one, eight two one, triple zero. And this comes from our drug forfeiture account in the amount of fifty-five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrenzi, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
I have a question. Wha- what is, obviously, there's funds that come in and, and go out of that. In, in the past, what, what have you used those funds for?
They've, they've been used for, for various equipment for the officers. If, if we're looking to at equipment, we've used them in years past for, um, patrol vehicles, equipment for the vehicles. Essentially, it's, it's, it's money that goes back towards the enforcement of, of drugs. You know, you, the officers do the hard work out there. They're, they're out there making the arrests, the stops. That money gets put into specific accounts. I like to use that money.
What happens if you don't use it? Where does it go? Do you lose it?
Could be, yes. And, and, um, you know, generally, no, but depends on, on if there's a, a shift in any legislation or, or stuff of that matter. It could turn into user or loser funds.
I think I kind of have a bigger picture question. Right now, we're just talking really about the, kind of the pre-engineering of this. Do we have a general idea what the end cost of pouring this foundation, installing the, the new, the new tower itself, the installation of it? Because if we're spending money and then we get to a point where it's, you know, half a million dollars and we don't have money for that, I mean, we could be possibly throwing, be throwing good money after bad, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so included in the packet is the, um, excavation estimate, um, from JISI. It's, it's kind of at the end. I, I threw a lot of stuff in there. That is, that is at fifty-five thousand dollars for the excavation and the pouring of, of the foundation there. In working with the, the estimate for the tower company, I, I have an estimate from, from the tower company. And all in all, my plan is, once I, once I get the final, is, is to approach it at council. The, the funds that I'm looking at, I, I'm about a hundred thousand dollars for the project. So as, as far as the, the money from, from the funds between my alcohol forfeiture account and my drug forfeiture account, I'm hoping to be able to fund it off, off of those two accounts. But my, my, my estimates between the excavation and, and the tower. The tower installer is actually allowing me to go directly with the tower manufacturer to try and cut the cost for the city because it's going to take kind of his, his buffer that's, that's working in there. So off of his estimate that he had, it should actually be a lot less. But I want to make sure to have everything put together and then present all that. But my estimates are about a hundred, a hundred and ten from, from that. So that, that was my main concern with not wanting to come, spend fifty-five hundred dollars on engineering and then it gets to a number that's, that's way outside of, you know, something that, that we can afford for the city.
That's why I'm asking.
Yep, yep, no.
All right, I believe we had a motion and support. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And I believe you had second motion?
Yes. Second motion is to request a contract with G2 Consulting to perform the engineering work for the tower.
So moved.
Motion by Trenzey.
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, sir?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, as, as we're talking about, you know, our, our dispatch tower, I just kinda wanna highlight really the, the lifeblood of, of our department being, being the dispatchers. A lot of times, you know, you look at police department, it's always the officers, it's always the work they do on the street, but there's, there's a lot of work behind the scenes and a lot of things that, especially at our department, that our dispatchers do that, that really is, is a thankless job. April 14th to April 20th, so coming up on next week, is actually National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And with that, I just got a, a couple little quick facts regarding 911 and dispatchers. And in case anybody didn't know, on February 16th, 1968, Alabama Speaker of the House, Mr. Rankin-Fight, made the first 911 call from Hayville City Hall. Today, there are 134 primary public safety answering points in Michigan, so our dispatch is one of those 134 points in the state of Michigan. And overall, in the state of Michigan, there's 2,200 dispatchers that work within the state, so really a, a small number when you consider we've, we've got four of those 2,200. So just wanted to let the public know that it is National Telecommunications Week and, and really be thankful for the work that they do out there, because they, they really provide an excellent service for our city. There's not a, a business or place that you can't call up and our dispatchers will know exactly where you are, how to get you help, what side of the building, and, and most of the time, they know the business owners of what's going on. So it's, it's really a tremendous service that our dispatchers provide to the community.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, DPW Superintendent Bill Diamond has a family commitment tonight, so I get the challenging task of presenting his stuff. He does have one motion, you know, the Water Wheel Project, the monument on Hall and Van Dyke, that's been ongoing since the fall of 2022. After many work hours and large team effort, it has been completely rebuilt by the DPW and prepared for the final coating so that it can be reinstalled. The following quotes were received, you have the wheel sandblasted, sealed, and finished coated, and he lists the four vendors there and their numbers. Note that the bottom one does, only includes materials that even though it's the lowest number, the work would have to be done in-house. Mr. Diamond is recommending to approve the quote from M-Tech for $2,360. So he would be looking for a motion from City Council to approve M-Tech quote 10524 to prep the entire surface, primer coat completely, and finished with a black polyurea coating with full encapsulation for $2,360 through the Street Department Building and Grounds, GL 101-441-937000.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. We'll make sure Mr. Diamond knows about that. Second item that he's asking for a motion, the Grant Park Slide near the, the tennis courts has been closed since last summer due to unsafe conditions to, due to the tube entry section. A quote has finally been submitted by the original dealer for the sections and materials needed to make the necessary repairs in order to open the slide back up for safe use. Mr. Diamond recommends the approval from We Build Fund for the attached quote for DPW to remove the broken item and install the slide, slide sections. Quote is valid until 4/13/2024 with a six to week, eight-week estimated delivery. Mr. Diamond is looking for a motion for City Council to approve the purchase of the parts and materials for Grant Park Tube Slide from We Build Fund for $4,146.53 from Parks Department Maintenance Parks Fixer, GL 101-751-935000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trenzey, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yay.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Second motion, to amend fiscal year 2024 general fund, Parks Department Budgets transferring $5,000 from the vehicle purchase, GL 101-751-986000, to the Maintenance Parks Fixtures, GL 101-721-935000.
So moved.
Motion by O'Donnell.
Support.
Support by Trenzey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And he did give me a written report. I'll read it into the record. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I apologize for not being in attendance this evening, but request an approved absence to attend a school function for my children. I have two items on the agenda, both requiring City Council, which we addressed. Other quick update includes, we have completed 143-point inspections of the required 250. This is for the lead service line work that's getting very close to being underway. Millions from the packing plant are being removed for the request from SME for the upcoming drilling and various other testing of the site. We are using them to level the rear yard at DPW and various other locations throughout the city. What he's referring to here is the packing plant. They completed Phase 1 testing, and SME is scheduled to begin the Phase 2 testing where they actually do the core bores somewhere around April 15th. So they needed everything that could be removed from the packing plant grounds to be out of the way so they could do their, their drilling. Sites have been located for the DIA art display happening May through October. This is the inside art program. I believe we're gonna have nine art pieces around the downtown area that the DIA sponsoring. We had a similar thing a few years ago. It kind of, the wind was taken out of our sails, though, because it was right during COVID, so there's a lot of programming that goes along with this, these art presentations, but because it was right at the heat of COVID, we couldn't take advantage of any, any of that programming, so this year will be much different.
We also had it the first year that the DIA was doing this.
Yep. I think this will be our third time now. Annual cross connection, pumpage, and service line reports have been submitted to Eagle for compliance. The new backhoe has been delivered and the old one sold. It has been put to use immediately with the millions project. Thank you again for this purchase. The crew is excited to have such a great tool for the department. Handicap parking signs have been added to CAS in the fire rear lot and the Van Dyke lot for compliance. They swapped out torn state, Michigan state flags throughout the city. The crew attended OSHA safety training at the Warren Water Department. The canal no driving on shoulder signs have been installed. Updated no parking signs were installed on Reamer Court. They're currently working on repairing the stage for the Summit Music, Summer Music Events at Memorial Park. And the donated tree from Mrs. Ziremba will be planted this weekend. The dedication for her husband and son is this Saturday, April 13th at 11:00 AM, if you would like to attend. The swing was already installed, so that is Mr. Diamond's report. Lot going on in DPW.
Earlier, it was indicated that that was at 11:30 AM.
Yeah, I think, I think it's actually at 11:30 AM. If any of you are planning on attending, feel free to shoot me an email and I'll verify that.
Okay.
But my email from Mrs. Ziremba, just maybe two, couple days ago, I believe, said 11:30. All right. Mr. Paterson, is there anything to report tonight? Negative. Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mayor and Council, you have before you my, the deputy clerk contract as budgeted for in the fiscal year 24. Clerk's budget, a full-time deputy clerk was hired. Becky Livernoy was hired October 9th of '24 for the position. She has, is about to celebrate her two-year anniversary with the city on the 14th, and my request is to approve the deputy clerk contract as presented in your packet.
I'll make that motion that we approve the contract.
Motion by Trenzey.
Support.
Support by Robinson. Any discussion from council?
This says that, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, this says that she was hired October 9th, 2024. That's in the future.
Yeah.
Uh, I apologize. It was 2023.
2023?
I, I apologize.
I can see that typo.
She has a delay, by the way. I don't know if you knew that.
Because, well, then my other thought was, well, did you mean April 9th, like today? So, just making sure.
I apologize. My mistake. Good eye.
Good catch, councilman.
That's how great she did. Back in time, you know?
Yeah.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
All right. Sakura, Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you to Ms. McGrail for all of our back and forth over this, and I want to officially...
Welcome Becky to the team. We're really glad to have her.
I love it here. Today.
That was an outstanding golf clap, by the way, that we had going.
And I believe you have another motion?
I do, thank you. Next is for a budget amendment for fiscal year 2024 election supplies. Due to consolidating our city's precincts to one precinct, new voter ID cards needed to be printed and mailed to every voter in the city, and due to time constraints of the February presidential primary, we solicited Spectrum printers to print and mail the ID cards. Setup and printing cost was $1,350.06 and postage was $1,922.42. We still have mailings for elections prior to fiscal year ending, and there is no offsetting revenue for this expenditure, unfortunately. So I would be requesting a budget amendment to amend the fiscal year 23 and 24 budget for the expenses. I need two motions, one to amend elections, printing, and publications, 101-262-904-000, increasing the amount by $1,360.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Trenzey. Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council?
Is it, so we sent these, we sent cards out before the February election, and we have to do it again?
Uh, no. I had to send them out to every voter because we changed from three precincts to one, and that changed for the whole city to know that we were just precinct one, because everybody's voting at the schools now at Flickinger, excuse me, instead of one precinct, one at the library and precinct two and three at Flickinger. So that's why I had to let everybody know. Voter ID cards are to let voters know where they need to vote. You don't use them at the voting on, on an election day. You need your license, but I, I'm required to send those out to all of the voters, so...
Gotcha. I misread, I, I...
I just got mine today.
I read this.
Because the mail returned it from us.
Um, yeah, I misread. I thought, you know, I thought this meant we were sending them out again.
No.
We're paying for what we did.
We're catching.
Correct.
But in August and November, it'll be back to normal, right?
No.
We're always doing it at Flickinger now?
We're always doing it at Flickinger.
So no more voting at this?
Until we reach over the 5,500 voters, I, I plan to keep us one precinct all voting at Flickinger.
Okay.
Okay. It's just across the street. It's okay.
It's a little bit far, but okay, I'll figure it out.
Yeah, I used to be able to walk. I can't walk anymore.
Right? So I have a motion by Trenzey and a second by O'Donnell.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And my second is motion to amend elections, postage, 101-262-732000, increasing the amount by $2,000.
So moved.
Motion by O'Donnell.
Support.
Support by Trenzey. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura, Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Uh, there's nothing from Parks and Rec or Historic tonight. Ms. McGrail, anything from our city attorney?
Nothing.
Nothing. At this point, we open the floor for communication from the public. This can be for any item, does not have to have been on the agenda, any item at all. You'll have three minutes to speak. If there's anyone, just go to the podium and give us your name and address, please. And we've got a brand-new gizmo here. Watch this, how professional we're getting.
Right. Hello, my name is Jim Lane. I just bought, a month ago, the building, the old E-Vitamin building, and I'm moving my business from Sterling Heights to downtown Utica, a dog daycare.
Whoa!
Just thought I'd introduce myself, my partner here, Pete.
Where at?
E-Vitamins.
E-Vitamins.
The E-Vitamins. The old E-Vitamin building, and we're just happy to be here. We, we definitely, like, we've got a great business, we're very involved in the community, and we want to become more involved of any city that we want to be in, and this is it. We looked at Troy, looked Rochester, we got lucky here. So we definitely want to be ingrained in the community. How can we help out? My door is always open. Any good ideas? Bring some exposure?
Puppy parade.
Yes, yes.
Puppy parade, for sure.
We're advertising. We plan to be open, the, we just got approval by the, by the city yesterday. We got the permit today. We plan to be up and moving middle of May, hopefully.
What is your name? Like, what is the, the dog daycare?